If I could call an order. Prayer, Councilwoman Thompson, followed by Pledge of Allegiance.
In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all those who are gathered here today. We pray for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant us a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is an honest disagreement. I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in Eddie Stone. Also, we ask your blessing upon all who suffer from addiction. Strengthen them to reach out for help, enable them to take the first step to recovery, and give courage and hope to their families in the power of your love. Bless our small town of Eddie Stone and the residents who called home. In your most blessed name, we pray, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Reeves.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Reeves.
Here.
Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Ms. Groves. Mr. Donahue.
Here.
President Stewart.
Here.
For a quick announcement, we did hold an executive session prior to this evening's regular meeting. Purpose of the executive session was to discuss litigation and personnel issues. Presentation, Borough Council would like to welcome from Boy Scout troop number 52, Mr. Gabe Noel.
Noel.
Noel. I'd like to... Gabe has come forward to council to earn his Arrow of Light, to graduate into the Boy Scouts, correct? And his community project that he's identified is to do an education outreach for our single-stream recycling program, so I will turn the floor over to Gabe.
Hi, my name is Gabe. I'm a Cub Scout from PAC 52. I'm required to participate in a community project to receive my Arrow of Light badge. I'm here today to seek support and guidance from the council on my plan to educate the residents on recycling program. My plan is to travel around town, handing out fires and stickers, explain proper ways to recycle, and explain the benefits for the environment and community. For example, recycling saves natural resources of energy, and it reduces waste disposal costs and generates additional income. I've noticed in our home, we have more recycled trash than solid waste trash. I really want the recycling program to stay because it creates and keeps jobs and builds a community where people work together.
Gabe, as I had explained to your mother and yourself prior to the meeting, what Borough Council is asking you to do is definitely with adult supervision, as you greet our neighbors throughout town to explain the recycling program if they are willing to participate. We have stickers and also information flyers to help you give the education to the community. Right now, we are averaging just over five tons a month, and what we're hoping is with your efforts that we would be able to get up to our 20% goal. So if we can get 10 to 15 tons per month, based on your efforts, you'd be serving the community very well. So we appreciate you. And we will send this to mom. Would you be willing to come back at next council meeting?
Um, yeah.
And give us an update on your progress?
Yeah.
Okay. And I will give you my name and address and come forward. Our next presentation is the Eddie Stone Drug Awareness Poster Contest. And y'all, if you'd like to say a few words about...
We had a... We put the initiative out, we had a huge turnout, as you can see from the posters around the room. We had about 32 participants. Everyone... I was surprised how knowledgeable some of the kids are, and I think that's wonderful. Knowledge is power. And we invited Jack Wellen here tonight to present the awards and recognize our participants. Jack, do you want to come up?
Sure.
Do you want me to mispronounce everybody's name like I usually do?
That's okay. That's what you want to do.
Can you hold that there? We wanted to take an opportunity to recognize everybody that participated in the poster contest. Councilwoman Thompson, when she brought the idea forward to Borough Council, you know, wanted to make sure that everybody had, you know, not only the education that you gave yourself about the evils of drug use through making the poster contest, but she also ordered Sunny's Story, a copy of the book for everybody who did participate. Can you give us a little bit about what Sunny's Story is all about?
Sure. Sunny's Story is written by gender cats, and her son did pass away from overdosing on drugs. The story is told through the dog's eyes, but it's a good story for everyone to read, even adults. It's from kindergarten on up. I did read it. The author is very friendly. If you have any questions, you can email the author. She'd be more than happy to email you back. She likes to communicate with anyone who has questions or who needs some direction. So she already emailed me and asked me to send some pictures of the events and the posters so she can include them on her website.
So I'm going to call forward all the participants in the poster contest. If you could come forward and stay forward until we finish reading all the names, we'll give one good round of applause to everybody after we read the names, and then we'll announce the winners. The winners are receiving a $25 gift card, and a winner would be from the K to three, from four to six, and from grade seven to nine. So is Joel Lynn Calderon here? JoJo?
JoJo, congratulations.
Elizabeth Good? Terry Jones? Rissa Ray?
Canarum.
Canarum? Judah Miller? Angelo Navez? Emilio Navez? Brianna Palladino? Nicholas Quinn? Marissa Richards? Nathan Records? Jayona Smith? Cassidy Starr? Nicholas Tanuni? Donovan Washington? And they're all the participants from grades kindergarten through third grade. For grades four to six, Hannah Barnes? Jacob Bradshaw? Jordan Goldheim? Julia Goldheim? Ellie Roy? The Roy? Alyssa Hastings? Caitlin Kozloski? Ty Miller? Alana Staniskas? Skylar Thompson? And those are the folks that participated in the fourth to sixth grade. Seven to nine grades, Summer McBride? And Missa Miller? Heather Newton? Ryan Quinn? And Emily Stewart? Can I have somebody to take one photo? We can gather everybody around with District Attorney and Councilwoman Thompson? Sure.
Rissa, Rissa, turn around. Rissa.
You want to face over this way, guys? It's right here.
For those of you who are going to receive the $25 gift card from grades K to three, Julia Doyle, if Julia could come up and grab our gift card? Alyssa Hastings for grades four to six? And grade seven to nine, Heather Newton? District Attorney Wellen, would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. First and foremost, it's an honor for me to be back in Eddie Stone Borough again. I certainly was here for 20 years, two and a half years ago, and I miss it. And I, you know, every day that goes by, I always say that Eddie Stone was such a great community when I was here. It continues to be an awesome community that I'm so proud of now that I serve on the county level. And I just want to say to the kids out there in regard to these posters, your posters are great, and what the message is is so important because in my office, sometimes we see a lot of bad things, and bad things happen to kids that use drugs, and bad things happen to adults that use drugs. So we want to make sure that the message that we have in our community is that drugs are really, really bad for you. Controlled substances or illegal drugs are really bad, and we see that every day. And some kids and some adults, they go to jail for using drugs, and unfortunately, some kids and some adults, they die from using drugs. So we don't want anyone to go to jail. We don't want anyone to die. And so the message that you're sending right now to your friends, to your family, is really, really important. So I'm very proud of you for all of these posters, and I congratulate the winners and everybody that took the time just to draw the posters and create the message that's so important today. So thank you again for inviting me.
Danielle, I, you know, certainly applaud you for the efforts of, you know, making sure that kids were supplied with poster boards and markers and crayons and colored pencils and the encouragement that you gave. The participation was overwhelming. The message, and the folks from council took an opportunity to look at each and every one of the posters, and, you know, the message was clear that our youth understand the evils of drug use, and it's reassuring that we're getting the message out early. I want to certainly thank District Attorney Jack Wellen. You've got a busy, busy, busy schedule, and to take the time to come and present to our children of Eddie Stone, their books and their certificates for appreciation and the words that you've provided is greatly appreciated. Wstewart@eddystonemorrow.com or dot org. If I could have those who were snapping pictures, please send the photos to me at We'll certainly be trying to do this on a yearly basis. So Danielle, anything that I'm missing?
No, thank you, everyone. It was a great turnout. Thank you very much.
Other members of council, we're going to take a five-minute recess, but I do want to give you an opportunity if you wanted to say a few words about the poster contest. Mr. Donahue?
I looked at everyone last week, and they were all good. And like they said, it shows that, you know, youth knows what's going on, which is good.
Councilman Patterson?
I'd just like to say a great job with all the students and programs. Great job putting it all together.
Place President Reeves?
Yes, I'd just like to say that council walked around and we put our load on, you know, what we thought was... Which child put the most effort in? And just want to congratulate everyone, and nice work, Danielle.
Thanks, Gary.
Councilwoman Tattishaw?
Just congratulations to every child that participated. You did a wonderful job. It was hard to pick winners because you're all winners for taking part. And thank you to Danielle for doing this, and thank you to DA Jack Wellen for coming. We appreciate you being here, too. Thank you.
Mayor Reeves?
Yes, I want to thank all the kids for the nice posters. They were very, very well done, and congratulate all everybody that participated and the winners. A lot of job well done, and thank you, Mr. Wellen, for showing up to represent. Thank you. Good job, Danielle.
Thanks.
And Chief Machesky, hopefully your job's going to get a little bit easier now that we've got an education of our youth on the use of drugs, but just a few words?
Yes, we have a very knowledgeable use, and I would like to thank everyone for taking the time to make the posters. Thank you very much.
Gabe, we also want to, you know, thank you for, you know, be willing to go through the community and give the education on the recycling, and I'm going to jot down my information for you to have so that you'll be able to contact me during the course of your project over the next month, and I'm certainly inviting you back to our June meeting so you can give us a recap.
Okay.
Gabe, also, if you need any help from any of the council members, please feel free to contact us, okay? We're more than happy to help you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Five-minute recess. If we go back on the record? Public Forum, Harry McGalpin. Sir, if you can come forward, just give us your address.
Sure. Thanks. My name's Harry McGalpin. I live at 1199 East Ninth Street, Eddie Stone Park. And I'm sure most people here do. I just wanted to bring up the fact that this is the 10-year anniversary that my sidewalk was damaged by PICO through utility line services. They hired a contractor out of Conshohocken, and they put in a gas line, a gas main from Woodland all the way down Bolins Lane, all the way up Eddie Stone Avenue, and they went to my house, and they crossed Eddie Stone Avenue at my house. They left that trench open all winter long, from 2003 to 2004. Mrs. Berry was the...
Crossing guard.
Crossing guard, thank you, at the time. And she said to me, "Yeah, you better watch that sidewalk because it had rained like really bad on one of the winter days." And I said, "Ah, they'll take care of it." I worked for cable my entire life, and I figured, you know, we're held responsible for any construction we do. We fix it, we make good on it. They'll do the same. They didn't. I've been here numerous times throughout the 20 years that I've lived here, and...
I haven't heard from you, so I thought it was always odd.
Ah, never been. And I had two PICO guys come out and give me their card, shake my hand, tell me, "We'll take care of it," and nothing's ever been done. But I just wanted to bring that to light because it seems like it just disappeared and vanished into the wilderness.
Well, the sad part is that maybe ever go to move, you're going to have to have it fixed.
Oh, I'm responsible for it.
Right.
And that's another thing I'd like to bring up. All the residents of Eddie Stone are now being held responsible for their curb and their sidewalk. Now, I can understand the sidewalk to a degree, but the curb, I mean, when I bought my house, that curb was pretty much just like it is today. Nobody said anything to Shelley Lavin when she was selling it to me. Now I'm responsible? That's a little shady. You know, there's got to be some kind of common ground here, you know? I watched my sister own the house on 13th Street with her husband, and they were a deaf couple. They weren't making ends meet. They ended up having to sell. They were foreclosing on it. They took every last penny they had to pay for that sidewalk. That's sad. That's sad. And I watched it. Now, I'm not trying to reprimand or belittle anyone here. We're all living in Eddie Stone, doing the best we can. But come on. I called the horn when he was in charge. Now I think it's Mr. Walters, Dallas. But when this was going on with my sidewalk, he didn't even know construction was happening. I said, "Does a major pipeline being put in the ground from Woodland through Eddie Stone? What construction?" Well, it's amusing, I mean, to say the least. Now it's not so amusing. It's 10 years.
Are you contingent to PICO? Was I had a problem with some...
My son works for PICO.
Bricks that were pulled out by a line through the street. And I had to keep after them. I finally fixed it.
No, I kept after them. Even Jack Wellen, I was just here, he actually sent some legal paperwork to PICO and everything. It just... So I figured I'd bring it up. Also, the new firehouse, now that it's up and running, it's beautiful. I love it. But now I'm getting some, like, serious emergency traffic passing by my house, which is great. I mean, it's fine. My gas meter is on the side of my house, and it's completely, like, vulnerable. If one of these emergency vehicles get T-boned, it's not going to be nothing. So we may want to look at putting up some kind of concrete pole, steel poles filled with concrete. And the rigs that are going by, too. The rigs are tearing up my sidewalk and my curb. They, they're not making the turn. As a matter of fact, they hit the light.
We had to complain. We had to complain on that tonight, Eric.
Yeah, they hit the light on the side of my house, and I hate, I'm not complaining. I'm just saying, "Yeah, man, these are things that need to be addressed before something happens."
Right.
You know? And if litigation occurs because of the sidewalk, I'm just going to say, "Hey, I've been here for 20 years, and this has been here for 10 years, and I've been telling them and..."
Did you keep all your information, all your copies of everything?
Yeah, I have... Yes, I do.
Tim, do you look into that?
Actually, would you mind bringing like a picture or two up? Because PICO has a liaison. He was just in here for other stuff, and I'd be glad to call him for you. But if Tina's here during, like, this is the, like, a picture of this is the damage, then I'll call for you for sure. Things are rough. They call them like the community liaison, and they have a number of projects going on in town. I'd be glad to bring it up and say, "This gentleman's been calling for a long time."
Yeah, like I said, I've actually had their representatives come to my house multiple times, and he shook my hand. "We'll take care of it. Not a problem."
But I'll try, I mean, I would try, but it would be helpful if you just give me a picture because I have your, at your 1199 East Ninth.
Your former house.
Yeah, if you get a chance, like during business hours, pop them up to Tina, and then I'll see if I can do anything.
Simple. Do you have a contact for Tina?
If you just come here to the Borough Hall. Tina's the secretary, 8:30 to 4:30 Monday to Friday.
You want to email the picture to me?
Well, I...
Oh, you want to just email them?
Oh, yeah, I can email them or text them. It's that simple. I just go home, take a picture of them.
Yeah, I'll write them. You can text them, I'll just take them. I'll write down my name and my cell and text them to me.
All right. Sounds good.
Hopefully I can do something, Eric. I mean, I'll definitely try.
Right. I appreciate it.
I apologize, Eric.
Don't apologize. I mean, just...
No, you've brought it up before to us in the past, and I thought it was fixed, too, because we hadn't seen you, and you had said that you came to you and, you know, said they were going to make good on it.
Well, Kevin, and I hate to even bring Kevin's name up, but just before his passing, he was, before he left council, he was saying, "I'll take care of it. I'm going to look into it," you know? And then he passed away. I was like, retired from council and then passed away. I was like, "Oh, my God." So, and tonight really isn't the best night for me to even be here bringing this up after all the beautiful stuff you guys did.
No, no, no. That's why we're here. That's why we're here, Harry.
Appreciate it. All right, Eric. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah. Thank you.
I live at 907 Civil Avenue. I had a little problem with an incident with an officer a couple months back. I talked to Act Chief Machesky about it. He said, "Handle it." About a job I was applying for. I went down and spoke to the owner of this business again, and they said that they cannot hire me because now another officer, or I don't know if it's the same officer or another officer, said, you know, "I'm doing stuff, and I was not to be hired in this house." So I just wanted to bring it up to everybody and bring it back to Eddie, Act Chief Machesky, see what we can do from there, see if anything was actually done to this officer.
Mr. President, I did speak to Mr. Tenny. Mr. Tenny thought that one of the officers was talking to a gentleman who was trying to get the towing job here, who said that he would be hiring a tow truck driver if the need arise. He was towing. Mr. Tenny apparently is trying to apply for that position. Mr. Tenny said one of the officers didn't speak highly of him. But I told Mr. Tenny that any businessman who owns their own business makes their own decision for employing, hiring, firing. It's not a police officer, it's not for a council, it's a private business. And that's a discussion that we have.
A discussion we had, but I guess going back again, he said, you know, he said me today, you know, "Officers of this borough said such and such that I'm in the wrong places where I shouldn't be," or something like that.
I'll tell you what, Mr. Tenny, if you would like a little stuff from me between yourself, me, and the owner of this business, okay?
Fine. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mary?
1232 East Thirteenth. I talked to Mr. Donahue earlier, Chief Reeves at the break. There's been a lot, a lot of tractor trailer traffic through the borough. Just earlier this evening, I'm coming up Eddie Stone Avenue at Ninth Street, right at Mr. McGalpin's house. I have to stop halfway down the block so this guy can make a right off of Ninth onto Eddie Stone Avenue, coming over that bridge, which is a, how many-ton bridge? I know it's not 40 tons, you know what I mean? He's coming over Ninth Street Bridge. I sit on my deck, I watch him go down Eddie Stone Avenue all the time. Couple months ago, before the election, I approached Mayor Orr, who was a tractor trailer making a left turn from 11th Street onto Eddie Stone Avenue. Now, we just had a room full of kids, right? Everyone said how good they did with all this. Every one of them has a scooter, every one of them has a bicycle, every one of us in line blades. One of these kids is going to pop out between a car. The truck's going to take him out. It's going to be too late. I want to relate a story. I related it to Mr. Donahue. When I was in junior high school, and 95 ended right here. Sellers Avenue, they used to get off 95, they would go up Chester Pike to Sellers Avenue, they would cut down Sellers Avenue, and they would go on 291. Well, the paper boy got killed. I just don't want that to happen here. I mean, it's, the signs I see at the end of the street on Chester Pike are kind of faded. We need new signs. Mr. Donahue said that's been addressed. Great. But we need to crack on. I drove a truck for a lot of years. The worst thing you want to see is that guy. You know what I mean? Because I talked to Al, I got some guys in coveralls, and a creeper, you start going over their trucks, they're going to stop coming through town because it's going to cost them money. And if it costs them money, the time is money for them guys. If they have to sit coming out of Pet Terminals for three hours while he goes over their truck, that's all money out of their pocket. So something has to be addressed there. I know I talked to Mayor Reeves, Mr. Donahue. I appreciate, but this is, everyone's getting out of school. I don't even have little kids. You know what I mean? But the truck traffic is just too much. It's just too much. It's got to stop. It's got to start costing them money. And I don't know, it used to be, when you went over an overweight bridge, Ninth Street, there used to be a flat rate and then $2 a pound over. Am I right? Because they used to do it in Darby Borough, Springfield Road, that bridge right down there. People didn't even know it was a bridge, and they would go over that, and then... And they would go over that, and they would get them all the time, because I got fined. I'm telling you the truth. You could generate some money for your borough and you can keep your kids safe. That's all I'm saying.
We, um, we actually spoke prior to the meeting, uh, Council-
Oh, yeah, because I was hot, I had just ran into the truck by Mr. McGallop's house, and I was, I came here looking for a cop. And I ran into Bob, and he took the rap. Thanks, Bob, sorry. But, um-
Mayor Reeves and Councilman Donahue was brought into the dating-
I sat on my deck a million times, said, "I gotta pitch about this, I gotta pitch about this, I gotta..." And I'm glad I picked the night with all the kids. But it's, we need, it's something that needs to be addressed.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, Jada.
I believe there's two things that we're able to do, is that the mayor believes that one of the signs directing traffic to Thirteen coming from Chester towards Eddie Stone is missing. So, we're gonna be contacting PennDOT to make sure that that directional sign, making sure tractor trailer traffic stays on Chester Pike-
Right.
-is addressed. Also, you are absolutely correct that the no truck signs that are on Eddie Stone Avenue, as well as Seville Avenue, as well as on Simpson Street are faded. I can have Gene Scott, our Highway Superintendent, renew those signs. In fact, that's one of the initiatives that we have as the Highway Committee, is to go through the town and make sure that all the signs are upgraded, because we also have the same problem with the no parking from here to corner signs-
Right.
-as well as the stop signs. So, there is going to be an effort through the summer months to make sure that the signage is renewed. We also spoke last meeting with our Borough Engineer, Mr. Catania, to take a look at the striping that we've got in the town. So, one of the things that we're looking to do is, is that right now you've got the two parallel lines for a crosswalk.
Right.
When you go to, let's say, up to the city of Philadelphia, you see what they call the "Fianos Keys,"
Right.
-which are the teeth.
It's a crosswalk.
And it gives you, it gives you that-
Right.
...appearance that, you know, that there's, you know, somebody that's gonna potentially cross there. So, we're looking at making those changes here in a borough, so your concern will absolutely be addressed. Correct me if I'm wrong, Act. Chief Chesky, but we do not have a truck enforcement unit simply because the signage prohibits trucks. So, I don't see a need to try to start a truck enforcement unit. I believe the need's gonna be is to make sure we take the proactive steps to keep the trucks out of town.
I think we could curb the truck traffic with more traffic enforcement in that area. The other thing we can check too is that we had a problem a few years ago where PennDOT was handling shipping routes, and they had it messed up, and they had cars going down Eddie Stone Avenue instead of down and around like they're supposed to.
That's, I figured, somebody's on their GPS, you know, he's looking for the shortest part from A to B.
Well, as I understand it before, the problem was when they're on these routes, and using truck drivers may know, is if they're doing a certain shipment, they have to stay on that route, if they go off that route, they-
Oversized loads pass down the surface.
That's what we're having a problem with before, and I can make sure that them routes are correct also.
You might wanna fill up a weight restriction on Ninth Street.
Yeah, we did have a-
I don't know what the weight is on the bridge, I guarantee it's not forty tons though.
We did have guys that were certified to weigh trucks and stuff like that there. At one time, we were taking them down the Pet Terminals to weigh them, and/or bring the state police, uh, weight team in.
Right.
With the, uh-
Supportable scales.
Yes.
And they're gonna-
And weighing them.
Um, since I'm the last guy, I wanna get my money's worth. My friend lives on H Street, um, the Borough Yard, again, it's something I talked to the mayor about earlier. He built a nice firehouse with a nice white fence, right? So, everybody who watches the firehouse gets it looking nice, but the people who live there get to look at the pile of metal recycling, the old tractor trailer, the piece of junk old barn.
The carport that was converted into a salt barn.
I don't know what it is, but it's ugly. Yo, now white fence would go along with, I mean, to make your people on H Street happy. And, again, on the last rainstorm, we got sewage, there was sewage on H Street again, after the check valve was put in. I don't know if this is the first one, just wanted to kinda make you aware, but it's not pretty.
We have issues at the Highway Department with the facility itself. There's been discussions about how we would be able to beautify the area. The, what I call the hut, which is the building or the shed where they report to in the morning. It's got animals crawling up in the rafters, and, you know, it's just not a ideal situation, and there has been discussions about, you know, the ways that we can upgrade that facility. Just a matter now of talking about the finances of it. But we certainly can make sure that, you know, during the summer months, that we get some people down there, there's, you know-
It's just, it's just ugly, that's all I mean.
The salt shed-
It's hard to polish it, don't worry about it. But, uh, I guess that's about it.
I believe we do have an estimate for some white fence.
Okay, cool.
It's just a matter of making sure that we put the money aside.
I, Gene Scott got invested in one, I have it at home. I don't remember what it was. It was somewhere around a hundred bucks.
Wasn't cheap.
It wasn't that bad, really.
It was somewhere around a hundred bucks?
No, 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 that's per foot.
No, 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 total cost, that's what we gained, I have it written down on-
Okay.
Maybe just leave it.
We'll take that deal.
Take that deal.
Yeah, right, take that one, send it to my house.
Close to a thousand bucks.
Hey, I'll be back in a couple months to talk about sound barriers.
About what?
Sound barriers.
Sound barriers?
Yes. I can marry one eyes on one window. I wanna say this, and then I'm gonna walk away. A long time ago, when all that blue root and all got done, and Clarence Bell was the senator, I know the borough petitioned him for sound barriers, and response from PennDOT was, "We don't build sound barriers on existing highways."
Probably if you live in Swarthmore, right?
Or Ridley Park. Why not us? That's all I'm saying. Hey, why not me? The what?
The fence at the end of the H Street alley. Can I get up then?
Sure.
Calvary Taylor, eleven oh four Eighth Street. Um, between A Street and Ninth Street, there's that alley that backs up against the Sooker's property there. So, there's, if you're on A Street, there's the garages on this side, but then there's the garages here, and Guy has his shop there. A lot of that wooden picket fence is missing, and it's gone. And there's a lot of unsavory characters that go down that alley at all hours-
Is this on Joe Guy's property? Is it Joe Guy's property?
Now, I'm asking you that, whose property is that? Is that Borough property, or is that his? Because it would be really nice if that fence could get replaced, because, again, I see it all hours.
I believe that's Borough property.
Okay, could another fence be put there?
Councilwoman Patterson, you have Dallas take a look at it, give us a report back on the best way to secure the area.
And I have seen little kids playing back there, and that's not safe either, because there's broken bottles, there's cinder blocks, and if we're talking about fences, we may as well just talk about that fence too.
Act. Chief Chesky, any incidents in that area that you recall of?
I can call them in if you want to, but I see from here- I just don't wanna get involved, I mean, I've seen people that play golf at night. Yes, there was a no parking sign, and he was out there in his drawers, like he was like, trying to pop a golf ball into this sign.
I'll make one last call for public forum, anybody else for public forum, Mr. Wilson?
Hi. If you don't mind, I'm gonna stay where I am.
You're close enough, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I just wanted a question. First of all, I had two questions, and one of them had to do possibly with what this lady was just speaking about. That area across toward the railroad tracks from the new firehouse, is that Borough property, or is that, that's private property, isn't it?
Roberts, Roberts' octagon is at, comes at-
Okay, so that whole parking lot there does not belong to the borough, that's private property?
Private property.
Okay. So, it's not a public street or anything? Okay. In terms of the trucks, I was just curious, because I know that there are trucks that go up and down Seville, like to the wine distributor and stuff like that, and I assume that there, that that's legal, right?
As long as you're making a legal delivery yet. If they have a manifest for a delivery.
What's that?
If they have a manifest-
Okay, yeah.
-for a delivery.
You'll notice that truck sign when you've got the truck with the red and the slash droid, the red circle on the slash droid, then there's a little supplementary placard underneath that says, "Except for local deliveries."
I assume that that's legal. And then on Eddie Stone Avenue, I mean, I live on Eleventh, and I see trucks going down Eddie Stone Avenue, and there's nothing on Eddie, well, there's hardly anything on Eddie Stone Avenue, they could be making deliveries through with a tractor trailer.
They're going to the terminal, that's it, they go into the bridge, that's all.
So, they shouldn't be going down there at all. And then, what's the difference about Simpson Street? Is that someplace where you can park an oversized vehicle overnight or something like that?
Yes, in the green area.
Okay, is that the only, aren't there a couple of streets in town that are like that?
Fourth Street.
Seventh Street.
Seventh Street, Tenth Street.
Okay.
And I believe you're allowed to park in the church parking lot too, right, where the-
Yes.
The church parking lot?
As long as it's not during church, you know, where Lighthouse Hall is.
Huh. Because we had, we had an issue a couple of times about somebody parking a box truck, you know, on Eleventh Street, and-
I think there's, I think every street has at least one.
Okay, well, like, for example, on Eleventh Street, there's no way that there's, it's just illegal to park a box truck on Eleventh Street, there's no-
Our force of action, go ahead, I need to be psyched up violation of our work from the park. Parking, uh, over a bus vehicle on the roadway, parking sticker, we have to get them to get out.
Yeah, I haven't seen anybody there in a while. Uh, how about box trucks in residential parking lots and things like that? Can you? Yeah, like, if you have an alley, can you park a box truck in your driveway?
I guess, I guess if it fits, I mean, it's private, it's your property, it's private property.
I thought there was some kind of a, something about not being allowed to park large RVs in, in, uh, in your driveway, like, if you were in an alley, something like that, I guess, nobody knows about that.
If you fit in there, it's your property, you can do it.
I think Mr. Wilson thought about like a common alley where there's no exact parking designation, so you hope an alley picked a thing. I would say it would be okay to almost not block the fire lane, because all the alleys in town are fire lanes, and it wouldn't be impeding other neighbors. If someone have a complaint, we'll go down and look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for public forum?
If anybody has any, like, don't be afraid to call the police. If you have a complaint, you remain anonymous. It's the only way it gets documented, corrected?
That is correct, I encourage anyone when they see any type of activity or something, if they have a question about, phone nine one one. It gets logged, and the officer will make his way over to it, and we'll get their own record.
Not if it's anonymous. I said, "Not if it's anonymous."
The call will be-
With no more public forum, Mr. Percente, can you present the treasurer's report, please?
The balance of the general fund, as of April first, two thousand fourteen, was two hundred eighty-five thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and twelve cents. We had an excess of revenues over expenses in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-eight cents. We had payroll expenditures of eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. The balance of the general fund, effective April thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, is three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, seven hundred and, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
Counsel, is there any questions about the treasurer's report? No questions, may I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as read, make it permanent, part of the permanent minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Cash receipts and disbursements, Colonel, please.
I make a motion that all bills are paid, all money deposited, once it's approved by each committee.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Mr. Percente, can you present the code enforcement report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. April, sixteen inspections were performed, thirty work stop orders violations, there were citations were issued, forty-three work permits issued, thirty-four licenses were issued. The Coast Department had an income in the amount of seven thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-five cents.
Counsel, any questions regarding the code enforcement report? With no questions, may I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept the code enforcement report as read, make part of the permanent minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Mr. Percente, may I have the police report?
Yes, Mr. President, there were four hundred and ninety-one calls for service, one hundred and sixty-two citations issued, thirteen accidents the police dealt with in April, thirty fast reporters, parking citations for the month were three, and the Eddie Stone Police made thirty-six criminal arrests in April.
Counsel, any questions on the police report for the month of April two thousand fourteen?
Yes, I have, I do, I have one. On the theft, are they residential, or is that? Real more.
Commercial, where it's twenty-four, which is businesses, and four were reported thefts rather than-
Thank you. Thank you, Ed.
Any other questions on the police report? With no questions, may I have a motion to accept the police report for April two thousand fourteen, please?
Make a motion to accept the police report as read, make it permanent minutes. A second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Percente, may I have the fire report?
Yes, Mr. President, in April, there were twenty-eight alarms, eleven in the day, seventeen at night, three hundred and thirty-three members responded. Also during the month of April, members of the fire company attended training on the foam trailer that was donated recently by the Eddie Stone Rail Company. This trailer will be stored at the firehouse, it should be in service, I think, next week. The borough will ensure the trailer had to get proper tags on it. Members also attended a training class on proper use of a, what they call gen door harness.
Members of council, any questions on the fire report? With no questions, may I have a motion to accept the fire report for the month of April two thousand fourteen, please?
I make a motion to accept the fire report as read, make part of the permanent minutes.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Percente, I see that you've got the minutes for both the workshop and the regular meeting for March two thousand fourteen. May I have a motion to accept the workshop meeting minutes from March third, two thousand fourteen, as well as the regular meeting minutes from March tenth, two thousand fourteen?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the workshop meeting on March third, two thousand fourteen, and the regular meeting for March tenth, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Motion made in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I also see that you've got the minutes for the workshop and regular meetings for the month of April two thousand fourteen. May I please have a motion to approve the workshop meeting minutes for April seventh, two thousand fourteen, as well as our regular meeting on April fourteenth, two thousand fourteen?
Make a motion to accept and approve the minutes for the April seventh and April fourteenth, two thousand fourteen minutes.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Hang on a minute, there's an error. Since I was asking, however, I had prayer, and I made a presentation, so that's just a tiny error.
Let's put it in reverse. Mr. Percente, can you make the correction that Councilwoman Patterson was present at the April fourteenth meeting?
Yeah.
She was-
When you weren't here, were you still over there?
Her proof of being present was that not only did she give a presentation about the Women's History Month, she also, her picture appeared on the front page of the Town Line, and she didn't invite Claire that evening.
So, I think she was here.
So, I'll make that correction, and the correct version will appear on the official books of Eddie Stone Avenue.
I believe Beth was here as well.
I don't have as much proof that Beth was here, but I can prove that Beth was here.
Yeah, Brad, this is the first meeting, Beth Smith.
Yes.
Okay, we'll take care of that. Sorry about that.
Beth also.
We were here in April now, you're absent too.
I'm sure.
We just didn't notice you. She needs to sit up in a corner where we can see her.
You guys speak up when we're sitting here.
Let's back up, I would like to have a motion to accept meeting minutes for April 14th, 2014, with the following corrections being made, that Ms. Tattersure will be marked as being present, Ms. Gross will be marked as being present, and the Honorable Mayor Reeves will be marked as present. May I have a motion to accept those corrections? Counsel, you've had an opportunity to review the emergency services contribution agreement between the Eddie Stone Rail Company and Eddie Stone Borough. It's essentially an agreement that we would receive, tag, and ensure the foam trailer for fire suppression. Counsel, are legal, counsel has recommended acceptance, so I will entertain a motion to approve the emergency response contribution agreement between the Borough of Eddie Stone and the Eddie Stone Rail Company.
No order, Mr. President.
Second.
I have a motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Counsel, our workshop meeting, we reviewed the updated civil service rules and regulations. Electronic copy was distributed to everybody last week. A final copy was presented to everybody for review prior to the meeting, and I'd like to have, accept the motion to approve the updated civil service rules and regulations, and that would be adopted the 12th of May, 2014.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to adopt the updated civil service rules and regulations.
Second.
Motion made in second, to adopt the updated civil service rules and regulations, effective May 12th, 2014, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Counsel, we discussed at the workshop meeting last week, was part of the update of the civil service rules included the promotional procedures for the positions of lieutenant, as well as sergeant, to provide rank within the Eddie Stone Police Department. We will need to give approval to the Civil Service Commission to advertise and begin the process for promotional examinations, so I'll entertain a motion to, for the Civil Service Commission to advertise for the promotional examinations for both sergeant and lieutenant. May I have a motion?
I make a motion for the approval for the Civil Service Commission to advertise for promotional examination for sergeant and lieutenant.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries. As a sidebar, I believe that we could probably have testing start as early as June. Counsel, last meeting, we discussed the summer schedule for workshop meetings. Karen, help me. We will not have workshops in June, July, August, and September. We will still have our-
We will resume workshop meetings in October.
We'll still have our regular meeting on the second Monday of every month, and we will have scheduled executive sessions prior to the regular meeting, so-
And if something comes up, we will always have emergency meetings.
So if I could have counsel, if I could have a motion to-
Dress down.
Let's not forget the dress down. So if I could have a motion for counsel to approve the adoption of the summer schedule, which includes dress down, which would eliminate the workshops in June, July, August, and September?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President, to approve the summer schedule with no workshop meetings, June, July, August, September, and dress down.
Motion made in second, it all in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Counsel, as we discussed during the executive session, we are currently in a litigation matter with the former Chief of Police, Mr. William Connor. There, as some at the council table perceive, a potential conflict with one of the members of council is, that prohibits us from discussing the litigation during our executive session. At the advice of our Labor Council, he suggested the council appoint a liaison that would be speaking directly with our Labor Council, and it would be the liaison's responsibility to share any type of litigation strategy with the other members of council. If I could have a motion for the appointment of a liaison to discuss litigation matters concerning William Connor with our legal counsel, please?
I'd like to make a motion, have Bill Stewart be the liaison between council and our labor's attorney.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Can we have a roll call on that, please?
Ms. Thompson?
I'm staying.
Ms. Tattersure?
Yes.
Ms. Reeves?
Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Dunne, you?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Counsel, any other actions that need to be taken this evening formally?
Yes. We need to hire somebody to clean Lighthouse Hall and the new firehouse.
Are you recommending someone, or are you just bringing it to our attention?
I could recommend Amy Riley to clean the firehouse, the new firehouse. And I'd like to see Anne Jackie come back, clean Lighthouse Hall, because we know, she knew what she was doing, and she did a fantastic job.
Did you rehearse that, does, I mean, has she shown interest in doing that?
Have you contacted Bill?
I did not get a chance to call her on the way home this evening, so. I guess the first question would be, how much would we be paying per hour? And then, you know, with the firehouse, you would have to coordinate the schedule based on any of the rental events, so, you know, it'd be a situation where if they have an event on a Friday evening, and then need to turn it over for a Saturday luncheon, you'd have to have an individual who's got a flexible enough schedule to be able to say, okay, I can do it. And some of the events on a Friday night aren't wrapping up until 11 o'clock, so we're just gonna have to make sure that the individual's got that flexibility, that they're gonna be cleaning the facility around the events, as opposed to at their convenience. And then the other issue's gonna be, is that, you know, what are we paying per dollar?
Tim, do you know what we pay? Can we look it up and see what Jackie was making before?
We can look it up, yeah. Yeah, probably. We can do that.
Part-time rate?
Yeah, it's whatever, part-time, ten something, I remember it was.
I can get part-time.
Okay, yeah, go for it.
What possibly?
Jackie Cowan, so you know W A N? Is she Cowan?
Yes.
Or Phillips, it might be under Phillips.
Okay, alright.
Sure.
Amy Riley, would she not be willing to clean Lighthouse Hall, or she?
Can't do both. Well, the thing was, we were trying to split it up, only because we know what kind of job Jackie did. I mean, you would walk in Lighthouse Hall and all you smelled was bleach, you knew it was bleach. You wiped cabinets down, counters down, they didn't have ants, they didn't have murches, they didn't have anything. I don't know if anybody remembers when Jackie was cleaning, I mean, soon as you opened that door, all you smelled was bleach. But you did a great job, you knew what you were doing.
I still want her schedule right now, I spoke to her, she's pretty busy, I'd love to see her do it. But I guess you could-
We can reach out to her, we can-
I did ask Amy Riley to put in an application, and I know that she did, yes.
For both, Dave, or just for one?
Um, I did speak, well, I was just for the one at the town, and that was the hall, the new firehouse hall. Yeah, I spoke briefly a little bit about the Lighthouse Hall. And I told her if somebody would contact her and do an interview.
Jackie can't do it, or she can't do that. Building committee, you'd have to get together, I mean, discuss any applications we have there. You're also gonna have to do the ones we can't. I guess you can get together with Dave.
You're looking hurt, I think, right?
Because it's admin, admin and rec, so the two of them will have to get together and go over the applications they have for who's gonna run the summer camp, who's working summer camp. Summer camp is, it's coming up, so.
She has, she has a bunch of applications, so.
Yeah, we'll phone up one day, just let me know if it's right.
Thanks, guys.
What are you looking at, you know?
I'm looking at-
Yeah, in terms of the number, in terms of the number of hours.
Well, wait, the new firehouse is gonna, like you said, it's gonna depend on-
It's gonna be the event dependent.
Right, event dependent. How many nights are, do they have something going on at the Lighthouse Hall? I know that there's softball going on, so the outdoor, outside bathrooms need to be cleaned.
I don't think they're, did they fix those yet?
Outside bathrooms are fixed.
Last week, I knew they were using inside.
And we also have to get the repairs done, we need new toilets in there, we need, does the fan go in?
The fan, yeah, I asked, the budget time in November for the fan, and I got that green light where it had to just have been installed or purchased. Because that's what we were talking about with the refrigerator, as long as the refrigerator is running, it blows out hot air, and then the hot air tells the refrigerator, hey, it's hot, and then it runs again, and it just, it burns the motors up on them.
Will the refrigerator fix?
Yes, refrigerator's fixed.
Freezer, okay.
Please, we don't get exhaust.
Freezer down in the new firehouse, is okay?
Yes.
Turned off.
What, the freezer down in the firehouse? So why it was?
Yeah, I told you it was turned off, which was like her.
Right, but the ice maker was, I think when your event was there, it was, wasn't giving you-
It was coming out in real big globs, like it wasn't broken up.
The gentleman who fixed the soda box at the recreation, at the Lighthouse Hall, went down and made an adjustment to the ice maker. And he adjusted the setting so that it's not freezing as solid as what you had experienced. It's now has the, when the ice comes out, the impact of it hitting the other ice breaks it into the chunks. So that is taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
We need to make a motion to hire somebody, I guess, it's, I would, I would-
Well, before we make the motion, you have to check for Jackie, and we have the, Despo and Dave have to get together.
Yeah, but it would give us, at least give us authorization to put somebody on the payroll.
Alright, I make a motion to be able to hire a person to clean the new firehouse hall, and a person to clean Lighthouse Hall.
Second.
Motion to hire a individual or individuals, plural, to clean both the Joe Hughes Memorial Hall, as well as Lighthouse Hall. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Tim, if you could take a look at, you know, what the rate was the last time we had a cleaning service in there?
Yeah.
Dave, Karen, and Despo, if you could look at potential candidates through recreation, as well as admin, and if we could move forward with making sure that the facility is clean for any type of events that we have for the banquet hall. Any other action items for council this evening? Just a reminder of the public upcoming events, next Saturday, the 17th, at 12 noon, is the parade and housing ceremony for the Eddie Stone Fire Department. Mayor Reeves, you wanna give a little bit of an explanation of the events that are scheduled?
The housing and parade will be, will begin at 12 noon. The lineup is behind the shock parade, and then it goes through the borough, through the streets of Eddie Stone, ending up going down Eighth Street and behind the firehouse, and pulling out to the front where the roadie stand will be. After the parade's over, the trucks, once they pass the roadie stand, the other trucks besides Eddie Stone will park down into the parking lot of community transit. And there'll be late refreshments served, and shirts for sale and mugs for sale.
Shirts and mugs?
Yes.
And the housing is dedicating, what two pieces will be?
The ambulance and the QR suit.
I know at the workshop meeting, we had some discussions back and forth about the next recreation board meeting, is it actually going to be on the 20th?
Yes, we're gonna have one tomorrow, it's just, it's not a meeting, it's more of a, sit down and organize, put more out there.
Okay.
Put the regular-
Regular, regular break board meeting's gonna be Tuesday, the 20th, at 7 o'clock at Lighthouse Hall.
Correct.
Friday, the 23rd of May, at 6 o'clock, we encourage everybody to gather at the Borough Hall, and have a ride along with the return of the Bike Patrol. Can I show the shirt? These are the new uniforms.
Bike Patrol.
Are those for sale, too?
They're gonna ride, I don't think they're gonna ride.
Mr. Patterson, I caught myself before we published the meeting minutes, it's, I did change the date to Sunday, the 25th, for the Memorial Day Parade, picnic, and fireworks display. How are the planes coming along, sir?
Very well.
And Mr. Neary had left, but we do have a meeting at the Wednesday, the 4th of June, at 6 o'clock is the Police and Emergency Management, and at 7 o'clock that same evening will be the Highway and Sanitation Meeting, and one of the major topics of discussion at the Highway and Sanitation Meeting is actually an upgrade or a renewal of a lot of the signs that are faded throughout the borough, as well as taking a look at the striping, because we typically will repaint all of the pavement markings during the summer months, so I wanna be able to make sure we're giving clear direction to Gene when he goes out and does his striping.
It's really the hatch bill.
Yeah, no, not on.
Yeah.
Depends on which way you're looking at it.
Across the street from my house, which goes this way, has on.
Counsel, any events that's missing off of the list that do you wanna bring up at this time?
I do have the community cleanup for Sunday at 9:00 a.m. at Ninth and Seville. Anyone who wants to volunteer there, volunteer, just meet there at 9 o'clock. That is the 18th, yes, at 9 o'clock, the day after your parade.
Do you know that we're all, Methodist Church is supposed to-
Bill?
Yes.
You got a letter from the church, you got church service on the 18th at 10, 10 o'clock? I already said I can't make it. Well, normally I do it on my Saturday, but your parade, not fine. I always do it the weekend before Memorial Day weekend. I got bumped, can't get lunch now.
Mayor, as I'm looking at the mess of a desk, that was a, an invite that we got from the Methodist Church to attend a Sunday morning service at 10:00 a.m.,
10:00 a.m.
recognizing folks that are in public service.
Public service.
The 18th, yes.
We'll recognize you, dude, that was like-
I'll come, I'll come check on the cleanup every church.
Alright, there you go. Now, on the same note, that Sunday, can we leave the gates open at the Highway Department so we can take the trash in and leave the rear end of the trash truck out?
Yeah, I'll have Gene pull the truck in as opposed to back it in, so that way you've got access- got access to the back of the truck for...
Memorial Day, um, the, the twenty-fifth, that Sunday, when we're having all the events, can we set the, uh, time back, back in the morning for the cars to be moved off the street so it gives Gina a chance to, uh, hit the streets with the, uh, sweeper machine?
What, are you looking at eleven AM?
Uh, no, the parade starts at, uh, twelve, um, I'm gonna have like eight or nine in the morning.
Not AM?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And one last thing.
Yes, sir.
The flowers for the monument, how are we doing it? I know I've talked to that a couple times.
I've got a, I received a text message from the Ladies Auxiliary at the Firehouse, they have some flowers that were, uh, leftover from their Mother's Day sale. Um, we as a borough are going to purchase those flowers, and that's what's gonna be used at the monument.
Right.
And the Ladies Auxiliary was kind enough to say that if we purchased the flowers at cost, they would be willing to dig the hole and put it in there.
See, that's what I want.
General updates, the website development update, uh, we actually met with Hall Communications who is our vendor doing the website, uh, the logo development is underway. Uh, Jennifer had brought some, uh, homepage templates and finalized the, the site map, uh, so we started as a council to, uh, give the homework assignments on who's responsible for writing copy about, uh, certain issues and events in the borough. Uh, beginning immediately, we're gonna start sending photos and copy content to Hoff, uh, in hopes that the site would be, uh, essentially complete, uh, by the early July. Uh, we'll begin site testing, proofreading, and the target date for the launch of the new website is the fourteenth of July, two thousand fourteen, which will be the same night of our July council meeting, so we'll, uh, certainly set up the projector and, uh, get plugged into the internet and give a little tour of our new borough website. The fourteenth of May is the Senior Awards Program at Ridley High School. Uh, I will leave the names blank since the event has not passed, but I did want to, uh, make sure that everybody understood that, uh, Borough Council and, um, the community does sponsor several awards, uh, that we give to high school seniors living here in the borough. The Susan Cowan DiMatio Memorial for two hundred dollars will be awarded that night. The Joe Hughes Memorial in the amount of a hundred dollars would be awarded. The Biddy Basketball for a hundred dollars, the Eddie Stone Homecoming for a hundred dollars, and the Eddie Stone Business Association's Award for a hundred dollars, so, uh, it's our opportunity as a community to recognize, uh, some of the seniors that live here in What time was it on Saturday morning at, uh, the third of May that the first rail car came in from the Eddie Stone Rail Company?
One thirty, Bill.
Time to get up.
I'll repeat this, I'll repeat...
It's eight o'clock, Dave.
I'll repeat the same story that we shared at the workshop meeting, was is that with a little bit of arm twisting, I convinced Councilwoman Reeves that it would be a good idea to go down and, uh, welcome the first rail car coming in for the new crude-by-rail facility at Eddie Stone Rail Company.
Give me one minute. I do have to say, he did bring me a couple.
The, uh, the deal was that the car was supposed to come in around twelve-thirty, and I promised that we would leave by one o'clock. Uh, those that are familiar with the operations of the rail company, uh, it is a big giant loop, so basically when it comes into the facility, the front of the train eventually meets the back of the train like a snake, and you're trapped in the circle until they unhook all the cars. So even though the train was there by one o'clock, the racking of the cars did not complete until about three AM, and that was when it was time that you had an opening through the tracks to, to leave there.
Mayor, we can blame Septa for it.
Yeah, we can blame Septa.
Right.
The, uh, the last thing that I have is, is I did want to make sure that I, on the record, submitted invoices, uh, to our solicitor, Mr. Duffy. Uh, these are invoices from Coco's Container Service. Uh, Coco's provided the dumpster service for the abatement that we recently performed, and, uh, that should be added along with, uh, the services with ADU to do the boarding of the property, uh, when we go and actually do the process of putting a, a borough lean, uh, so I wanted to make sure that you've had those in your possession. And I'll have to make a copy, 'cause that's the only copy, so we're gonna end up having to cut a check as well. Roundtable discussion, I'll start with Councilwoman Thompson.
Uh, I have two things. I first wanted to thank everyone who participated in the cancer walk. Uh, we had about two hundred and fifty people, and we raised close to two thousand dollars. Um, thank you to the Police Department and the Fire Department, uh, for their assistance, and I wanted to thank you personally for your assistance and, uh, your support with the walk. Also, uh, thank you to Councilman Patterson and Swyke Danby for your contribution, and, uh, thanks to all who participated in the, uh, drug prevention poster contest. Uh, thank you to all of council for your support, I truly appreciated it, and I was touched when you thanked me tonight, so thank you. That's it.
Councilwoman Tadshur?
Just, uh, I'd like to thank Abe Noel for coming up again and speaking to everybody for, um, for the recycle program. He did a wonderful job, and I know he's gonna have a lot more people recycling, and he's gonna get his badge. And the other thing is, I would like to congratulate all the kids again who, who participated in the, uh, poster contest, I thought that was a wonderful thing. That's it.
Vice President Reeves?
Um, Abe, good luck on, thank you for taking this task on.
Yeah, we were thinking about hanging out at the memorial services and kinda, does anyone wanna learn about recycling?
You take every opportunity you can to interact with the community and...
Um, and also, um, ladies auxiliary, you guys did okay on your fun, your flowers?
We did really well.
Good. I wanted to thank you all. Alright, you get it, Dave.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Patterson?
Um, Abe, I think that's a great thing that you're doing with the recycling, and if you need any help, just let us know. Um, you know, give your mom my, my number and email address, uh, that way, you know, do anything I can help you with, you know. Danielle, great job again with the, uh, posters tonight, getting that all together and making it happen. Um, and the ladies auxiliary, I, I, you're gonna plant the flowers, I love it. So, that's all I have, thanks. Everybody enjoy your Memorial Day.
We're gonna put it in reverse for thirty seconds, 'cause Karen remembers what you, what you missed.
Uh, yes.
Go ahead, Karen.
Next month, um, Kyle Gross, who was our junior councilperson, um, I imagine next month will be his last council meeting, and hopefully we'll, we can get him here. But I would like to, um, last year I went out and bought Cassandra, two years ago, I'm sorry, went out and bought Cassandra a gift, and we also gave them, I believe, a hundred dollar check. I would like to do the same for Kyle, I'll go out and purchase him a gift, and we can present him with this next, or next month rather.
What's the gift, Karen?
Uh, we got Cassandra a globe, a snow globe that had a lighthouse in the center of it. I talked to Cassandra and said, how do you, you know, what do you think of it for a boy? And she's like, oh, I love it. I don't know. Any suggestions? You think that's, you think it'll be alright?
Yeah.
It's appropriate.
Councilwoman Donahue?
I would like to thank, if you need any help, let us know.
Okay.
And, like, thank you for your, any of the posters and everything.
Was it, was it...
That's it. Your Honor, Mayor Reeves?
Yes, uh, I'd like to bring to the attention of, uh, council that, um, Paul Green, one of our part-timers, did, uh, submitted his resignation, uh, effective, uh, today, uh, gave to him two weeks ago, um, advised me that he has received a full-time job with the police. And I would like, um, Paul was with us for a little over two years, I'd like to see council give him, uh, some type of resignation, if all possible. Um, also, Abe, I wanna thank you for the job you did tonight, you did a very nice job. If you needed help, if you get a hold of me, I'd be more hap- happy to help you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Chief Chusky.
Hey, Abe, I'd like to say thank you for, uh, what you're doing for our community, and I would tell you, you did a great job speaking in public, there's a lot of people here.
Okay, thank you.
For the parade, I just wanna remind residents, and we will set, um, uh, we will set signs
up to Wednesday before each event, uh, parking will be restricted on Seville Avenue from I Street up to Chester Pike and H Street, so, uh, residents can enjoy the parade and , uh, trucks can navigate through town safely. Flyer out to the schools, so your children may come home, uh, with the flyers. The take-back initiative that we did last month was successful, uh, we made eleven point two pounds of prescription drugs that were collected at the Lighthouse Hall. Uh, the year before that, we collected a little over seven pounds, so we are improving, we're getting drugs out of our, out of our households. I'm working, uh, with the DA and with Borough Council's approval, I'd like to put a permanent drop box in the lobby of Borough Hall, so residents will have access Monday through Friday, eight to four, uh, to discard any unused prescriptions. And, uh...
That's it.
Sure. Um, Ed, I don't know, like, I've seen in other towns in the past, um, like, when I was younger, I could take my bike off, and they could do a serial number thing on it and write a card, that way if the bike got stolen, the Police Department would know. Um, there's a child down the street from me, his bike got stolen, they know who stole it, but he has no documentation saying that he owned the bike. We were just wondering.
We were, uh, gonna try to do some type of, uh, item like that, I remember when I was a kid, we used to, uh, we sit it down at the, uh, football field, and have a little basketball court down there, we didn't, weren't able to get that together for this event, but that is something I'd like to work on, uh, for...
I'll help you with it.
It's a good idea.
Thanks, sir.
I have a bicycle, please.
Uh, first, Abe, thank you very much, uh, for your efforts, uh, to promote the recycling program, it's something that's very important, uh, to the borough of Eddie Stone, and, uh, looking forward to seeing a lot of success and, uh, increased participation. Uh, you did a wonderful job, uh, with your public speaking, something your mother should be very proud of, and, uh, we invite you back, uh, next month, uh, for our June council meeting, uh, so you can give us an update on your progress.
Okay.
Danielle, uh, great work with the poster contest, uh, you know, it's the, the one-two punch, you brought the, uh, cancer walk, uh, to the forefront, uh, the end of last month, and, uh, the poster contest is a, has another success, and it's just a demonstration of, you know, us as a community all working, uh, together. Once, uh, wanted to give some congratulations out to Beth Gross, uh, she's absent this evening so that she could welcome in the birth of, uh, another grandchild, and it was reported earlier that, uh, baby Michael and, and mom are doing very well, so, uh, certainly wanna pass along those congratulations, uh, to Beth on the, on the birth of her grandbaby. And also, uh, Mayor Reeves and I had the opportunity, it was last Friday, to, uh, attend a luncheon, uh, down at the Liberty Electric. Um, the plant manager, John Klarak, and his team of, uh, safety managers, uh, were officially recognized with the Governor's Safety Award for Excellence, uh, they've, uh, operated that plant, I believe it was nineteen employees, uh, that he mentioned, and they have gone over twelve years without a job loss incident, so they should be commended for their safe operations down at the, uh, Eddie Stone, uh, Liberty Electric Plant, and, uh, we certainly thank them, that they thought of Borough Council to, to pass along the invite to, to share in the receipt of their award.
How many do they employ down there?
Nineteen.
There's less than one hundred and fifty other companies in this state that have received that dollar award.
There's less than?
Less than one hundred and fifty other companies have received that award in the last thirty years.
Wow.
Counsel, any other action before we adjourn? May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I just wanted to say thank you to council, you really made me proud tonight, working together, uh, everything that yous are accomplishing is what it takes by working together and appreciating what other council members are doing for the community, so I just wanna say good job, and I'm so glad we're bringing the rank back into the Police Department here, we need it, thank you.
Thank you.
We wanted it for years, Kathy.
Meeting adjourned.